Good afternoon and welcome to the September meeting of the Murphy's Historic Zoning Commission. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Anderson.
Here.
Gibb Backland.
David Becker.
Here.
Deborah Belcher.
Here.
Rick Cantrell.
Here.
Paul Cross.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Mae White.
Here.
Kurt Wade.
We do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and I call this meeting to order. We'll proceed. Everyone should have received minutes of the regular meeting we held on August the 16th. Are there any revisions or additions to these minutes?
Make a motion. We approve as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Then no, they are approved as written. Thank you very much, Brenda. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Robert, what is our first piece of business today?
Our first thing on the agenda is to elect new officers for the coming year.
Mr. Chairman, the nominating committee would like to nominate and submit Rick Cantrell for chairman for the upcoming term and Paul Cross for vice chairman.
Wonderful. And are there any other nominations from the commission as well? If not, any further discussion? All those in favor of the nominees as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Well, then we welcome our new chair, Rick Cantrell, and we thank you for accepting, and we look forward to your leadership. Thank you. I'll go ahead and change then.
Don't have to be so quick about it, Jim.
Ready to move. Ready to move on.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Jim Thompson for his most able leadership for the past two years. Thank you, Jim.
You're very kind. Thank you.
Absolutely. I would too. I think he did a marvelous job with it.
Thank you.
Worked very hard and guided us very well through those
I appreciate it.
tenure of yours.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Paul.
Likewise.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, what is the first order of business?
Chairman Cantrell, our first item on the agenda is addresses 347 East Main Street. The applicant Nancy Morris, they're requesting to demolish the entrance to the basement, which is behind the house, and replace it with a smaller entrance. In your agenda packages, I provided you with several photographs of the house. The house is located on the corner of East Main Street and North Manny Avenue. It was built in 1925 in the colonial revival style of architecture with a wraparound porch, a pavement fan, and a bay with its two stories, and originally it was a brick veneer and later was covered with stucco. It is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District on the National Register of Historic Places. The applicant wants to -- if I could pull up the pictures, then we could take a look at this on the monitor. At the rear of the house, they have an entrance into the basement, which was added to the house several years ago. Picture you see now is the front of the house, and picture behind -- whoops. Here's a picture of the back of the house on a monitor. And they're wanting to remove that entrance that goes down into the basement, which is probably six feet or higher or better, and replace it with a smaller version that would allow them entrance into the basement. This entrance blocks vision from the house out into the backyard, and the applicant also states it would be -- it provides them some security that would enable her to see out throughout her backyard. This kind of inhibits or prohibits her from seeing her backyard, and she would like to lower it in order to get in. And in your agenda package, you see a drawing of the entry. It's a black and white picture, and I don't have that on the monitor, but the drawing shows -- depicts the cellar doors at an angle, and it's going to have a removable bench cover to -- so it'll also provide a seating area for if they want to use patio chairs and a table out in the back on the patio. Some more pictures of the property. It shows the height of the unit itself will probably be the height shown on the monitor. It'll probably be maybe 18 to 24 inches high, and it'll -- I think she told me that it was going to be metal, a metal canopy, probably aluminum or lightweight frame type of material. And that's probably about it. If you have any questions, the applicant's designer of the entrance into the basement, he's at the meeting also, and will be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. It appears that Mr. James is representing Mrs. Morris today. If you would, please come to the podium, and if members of the commission have any questions, or staff, or Mr. James.
Steve James, I'm representing Ms. Morris on this addition, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Mr. James, what will the bench, what will the cover look like? I have the line drawing in front of me, but I'm not clear about.
Well, we're in the same boat then. It's just sort of a sketch or idea. She wanted to reduce the size of this, and she wanted to use it as a bench and still to cover the basement. It's the only entrance into her basement. My suggestions, and I talked to Robert on this, he's got the same situation in his house, I'm going to try to -- there's a lot of manufacturer or professionally done entrances for these basements, and that's the direction I'm trying to go. And once we get this, they have proper slope and drainage and seals the basement, and then we can probably have it upholstered with some foam and some type of canvas cover. Because, like I say, she has to access this basement, and we have to make something that she can get to very easily.
Right.
I know, for instance, that Bilco makes a common door, what I call a Dorothy door, those Wizard of Oz sort of doors, and you can open them up.
We've looked at Bilco, there's certainly a lot of them on offensive angles, but custom-made to fit that picture.
Does the face of a stucco existing entrance align with the face of the end of that wing? So there was some talk that she wanted to put potentially a fence, you know, in the future, and also wanted to build a porch out to fill in between the two wings, so that porch may come as far as that edge.
The way she's discussing it right now with me, she wants to have a second-story balcony off of the existing porch. I have the pictures at one time. She's not wanting to do it now, but she's thinking about doing it later.
Well, whatever you put there, of course, will dictate where the columns go.
Yeah. And we'll probably line up the columns with existing columns, and we shouldn't interfere with that basement entrance.
But again, are they filling in the whole, like, it's a giant U. Are they filling in the legs between the U with the porch in the future, so where the columns come down, it'll have to be on one side or the other of this opening?
Yeah, it should be, it should have plenty of room. From my measurements, it looks like it'll clear everything.
Okay. I just thought if the porch was out to the edge of those wings, it would look just so filled in, it would look like a massive block, and it didn't need to go that far.
Yeah.
Of course, that design's not being presented to us today, so it doesn't really matter.
It's phase two.
Yeah.
Steve, why do you think this entrance was designed this way eight years ago?
To me, it looks like there's been several additions to the house, and the back wing, that's the only part that has a basement to it, and it looks like that was the only way to access it, and they did the exterior access to that basement. I don't know why it was designed that way. It's pretty watertight right now, but it's
Does it establish a courtyard?
Do what?
Does it establish a courtyard, so to speak?
Somewhere like that.
So that won't exist if you take it down?
Well, it's
I mean, it'll exist, but it won't be, it won't have
Three sides.
It won't have four sides.
I don't know if I would call it courtyard. I'd call it an enclosed patio more than anything. It's pretty, it's not very, you know, good-looking to me, in my opinion. And like I say, it really blocks her view from the kitchen. She's had some problems with people crossing her yard and stealing stuff from her porch, so she wants to get a little better view to the street from her kitchen area.
Are the three windows above this entrance to the basement, are those the kitchen windows?
Kitchen windows, yeah. And I apologize to sketch. It was a deadline. I barely got that to Robert in time, so we haven't really got any drawings or anything on it yet, so.
You'll notice one of the drawings that I have, or one of the photographs, the visibility of the current, if you can show it up on the screen, from Manny Avenue, it's slightly visible from the street, and when you remove the structure itself, it'll probably be barely visible with the hedge that's already there, and she's already said that she wants to put more landscaping in the back, so it'll probably be almost invisible from the street. Now, the upcoming, her future plans with the porch and the fence and stuff like that, that'll have to be reviewed on case-by-case basis, but as far as the entrance into the basement, it is going to be minimized with the landscaping that's there already and the future landscaping that she's planning on putting in.
Mr. Chair, question. When this addition is taken off, there'll be a remaining section that's not covered by the new lower entrance, and so will that portion of the facade be covered with stucco to hide it?
Be stucco, back to the original.
Mr. James, do you think she'll be adding exterior lighting somewhere in the vicinity of the new entrance?
Adding what?
Lighting.
Exterior lighting, having been discussed at this point.
Okay. Any other questions of staff or Steve James?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the proposal as described.
Second.
Motion is second. All approve?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Well, Mr. Lewis, could we hear from you regarding the next issue on the agenda?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is addresses 915 East Main Street. The applicant is Harold Swafford. He's requesting to install a small retractable awning, which will provide cover for a small porch in the patio on the east side of the house. The property is located on the north side of East Main Street midway between North Bilbro Avenue and Cherry Lane. The house, it was built in 1926 in the neoclassical style of architecture with an arched doorway, a rounded porch with surmounting balustrade, and a portico. It is a two-story brick house, and it's a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District on the National Register of Historic Places. Mr. Swafford called me and explained that he was going to add an outside kitchen to the patio area on the east side of his house, and there's currently a, I think it's about a six-foot wall or maybe even eight-foot wall around that patio, but he also wants to add an awning that will cover a window. I'm not sure if that, is that a kitchen window?
That's a utility room.
Utility room, okay. Anyway, it's going to cover that utility room window coming out to cover the kitchen area, part of the kitchen area, and he's going to use it when he's using the kitchen area, probably only during sunny days when the sun is so hot, because I don't think the awning is actually built for rain to cover when you're actually cooking in the rain or outside in the rain. It won't provide much cover. You will be able to see the awning from East Main Street, just a portion. I know it's sitting back way off of East Main Street, but there's a little corner of the house and that patio that can be seen from East Main Street. And up on the monitor, I've shown a blow-up of the area that's going to be covered with the patio cover, the awning. And from East Main Street, it'll be visible, just only slightly, but at the same point, it'll still be visible in a change to the appearance of the house itself, so that's the reason for bringing it to the commission. Later on, I mean, at the end of your agenda materials, there is also a couple of patio awning samples. And, let's see if I can get to them. And the first one shown on the monitor here is, it depicts the awning fully extended. And then the next picture shows it, oops, fully retracted, and this will give you an example of what it'll look like in the corner. And if it's, and this, I'll pass around a sample of the material that he's wanting to use for the awning, and it's a dark color. You see, that's a dark-colored material, and the brick itself in the corner of the house is a very dark material, or color, and that will help probably make it almost invisible from the street, from East Main Street. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also in the audience.
Mr. Swafford, perhaps you could be so kind as to stand at the podium, so we could, is there anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Lewis has depicted?
No, that is pretty well the situation. As far as the awnings are concerned, it is just for shade. It cannot take water, so it has to be retracted at all times. If it does get wet, we have to keep it extended long enough for it to dry, but it's just a simple process of producing shade over our outdoor kitchen that we're going to build. It is about, as Mr. Lewis said, from the wall where the window is, that wall is 12 feet wide, and it comes out eight and a half feet. So it's very similar in size to the example that he showed of the smaller awning.
And the awning is going on the east, will be facing the east?
Yes.
Okay. And what are the dimensions of the awning?
12 by eight and a half.
12 by eight and a half, okay. Questions of staff or Mr. Swafford? I hear a motion or discussion?
Well, just one point. It appears when it's retracted, we won't be able to see it at all from the street.
Correct.
And you propose to have this stripe, this dark green with the stripe in it, is this the material that you're going to use?
Yes, that is the sample of the awning that we have selected.
Mr. Swafford, have you considered a solid green versus having the stripe in it?
No, sir. I don't get to consider such things. Charlotte chose the awning, and I bring it to you.
Along with Mr. Becker's question, I think the solid green would be less obtrusive, but I honestly don't know how much we'd be able to see from Main Street going either way. You know, if driven by and tried to see where that's going to be, and it's barely visible from Main Street.
Well, the fact of the matter is, 90 to 95 percent of the time, it will be retracted anyway.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the awning as submitted.
You have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Swafford.
Thank you.
I have my sample.
Be $1,500, sweet.
Mr. Lewis, do you have any staff reports or other business to come before the commission today?
The only other thing I have is I submitted a proposed tentative 2012 calendar. We don't have to act on this today if you don't want to. You might want to just look at your schedule for the upcoming next year and see if this will work in your schedule. It's, we're just trying to get ahead of the game, and so I'm just bringing this today. We can vote on it next month if you want to take a look at it.
So the circles are just to let us know when the month begins, when the first Tuesday of the month?
The circle is the submittal deadline.
I'm sorry?
The deadline for the submittal for the meeting. Usually, it's two weeks ahead of the meeting.
So really, nothing changes for us. Still a third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday of the month.
Robert, I've got one question in regard to the new officers. Our fiscal year normally ends June 30th and starts July 1, and since we were a bit late this year, are we going to keep the same fiscal year ending and starting the same?
Yeah, we're going to, that was my bad, and I'm going to try to do better and get it, do all this in the month of May, so we can get it ahead of the game and then be ready for June, so. Mr. Cantrell may have a short tenure, but he may have a longer than he expects.
The commission want to act on the calendar?
Why not? I make a motion we accept the calendar.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Who said him then?
I did.
Paul Cross. Any other business?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to compliment Barbara and Jim Thomas for the lovely job that they've done on their house, and if you've noticed, they've got their columns mostly finished in the front, and they put the stone on that the commission suggested, and so everything about their house looks so nice.
It does. You drove by today.
Mr. Chairman, if it would please the commission, I'd like to explain my negative vote on the first agenda item I'd like.
Absolutely.
In reading the material, it indicates that the subject entrance was added after the two wings were constructed approximately 80 years ago. I don't know whether that means that the entrance is 80 years old, or it could have been constructed in 1980. I rather suspect that the entrance was, just guessing, but I would say that that entrance was built the way that it was built to create a courtyard, an enclosed courtyard. And as such, is part of fabric that contributes to the house. It's historic fabric. It's old fabric. And there are also a lot of other suggested proposals that will take place, and I have no idea how this is going to wind, what is going to be proposed in the future. And I believe we have a responsibility to protect the historic fabric of buildings now. I do understand safety concerns, but again, I'm not sure that that is our responsibility, that our responsibility is to take into account whether or not the material that, if something is being demolished per se, if it's historic fabric of the building, then I'm always going to have a reservation about it being removed. And that has nothing to do with the owner, the designer, or anything else. It's just that it was put there, it's been a part of that house for a long time. It does create the kind of courtyard that you see in Savannah and Charleston and New I can't think of any other reason why anybody would have built one that tall. They had the option to build it the way that it's proposed to be built at that time, but chose to make it much larger for a reason, and it's been maintained. So, anyway, that's my logic. And I go, of course, I'm always, that's why there's more than one person on this commission, but I just wanted to explain to the commission the nature of my objection to it.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
According, according, I just want to add to that, when I was out there with Mr. Morris.
Morris.
And she said that the wings of that house were added on to the original house. So I think the original house was without those wings coming out the back, and I think at that time, the basement was added below, so it's not original to the original house.
I understood that, but it's 80 years old. The wings are 80 years old.
Right.
And they changed forever the appearance of the original structure when they made that change, and at some point, they added this cover, and that's the nature of houses. A lot of the houses on East Main Street is, very few of them are in their original configuration. The majority of them have been added to, and some of those additions are, in this case, 80 years old and have achieved significance in their own time. And we certainly don't want to be in favor of restoring every house on East Main Street to its original appearance. That would be the worst thing I can imagine. So I feel an obligation to protect these additions that are made that are much older, and that's why I raise that discussion. But I do understand it's not But I do understand it's not part of the original construction of the house. It would be interesting to know exactly, because I question the eighty years, because if a house was built in 1925, that would mean when it was six years old, they went through that major renovation, which would seem to be a bit unusual to have it happen that quick. But it's possible that they did it just as the house was six years old. I lived in a house in Shelbyville, Tennessee, that was built in 1904, and I have a photograph of in 1906 of a full two-story wing being added to it. It happens. I've seen, and I know Jim has seen some, through the years, has seen some bizarre additions to houses, and houses being moved. Some incredible things have been done with houses being moved, and it makes no sense to us, but in this case, the case of the house that I owned myself, they took the original inside staircase and made it an outside staircase, and closed up a fireplace, and created a whole new staircase in a different location in the house. And all within two years of the time that they moved in the house. Now, the fact that they were in the lumber business may have had something to do with all that, but it definitely has happened in the past.
Any other comments?
Now, I would just say, and I appreciate Paul's giving us some insight to that, but I would also encourage any of the members of the commission that that kind of insight to a thought before the vote also helps, might have helped some other folks consider to be on the same position you are in understanding your logic.
Thank you. Any other comments? Meeting adjourned.